Call this meeting, the Hartford Board of Education, to order. Ms. Santiago, can you take attendance, please?
Here.
Here.
Beth Taylor.
Here.
Frank Stoney.
Here.
Julio Flores.
Here.
David Taylor.
Here.
Michael Reschau.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the August 16th, 2016, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we appear to set goals, listen to the reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public; therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorming courtesy are an important element in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices, and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us. You are very part of our school system, and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Before we get to public session, we have a new member of the Board of Education swearing, Mr. Julio Flores, who was a member of Burns SGC, has two children in the system, one now at NTCA, right? And one at Pathways. So would Corporation Counsel come up? And these boys can stand up?
I swear that solidly, sincerely affirm that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as Hartford Board of Education members, best of your ability, so long time, for your performance.
Hi. Congratulations. All right. We move now to public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes. At two minutes, you'll hear Ms. Santiago ding the bell, and that's how you know you have one minute left to wrap up your comments. And in three minutes, you'll hear another bell, and I'd ask you to make way for the next speaker. We have a number of speakers this evening, so we'd like to keep it tight. The first person is Monica Carrasco.
I would like to first say good evening to everyone. My name is Samantha Pacheco. I am the PCO President of Sands Elementary, a mother of three and a resident of Hartford. I am here today to advocate for the best interests of children of Sands Elementary. Upon reading the investigation report from the State Department of Education regarding the kids' stickers labeling of children at Sands, my first response was the feelings of anger then disappointment and leadership of Dr. Narvez. Dr. Narvez, what is troubling to me and the parent is that those children were affected by this act, and you chose not to read the IR activity report before approving, before authorizing the activity to take place. Our children did not have a choice, and neither did we. There were children with several disabilities like SP, cerebral palsy, who could not communicate with their parents or let them know how they felt or even that a sticker was placed on them. Those children did not have a voice, but we do as parents. We have started collecting petitions, forms for present for parents who have no confidence in your leadership and will be presenting petitions to the State Department of Education. We simply cannot continue to send our children to school knowing there is no trust in this leadership. What other report or personal profession development exercise are you not reading that could ultimately affect our children?
Okay, buenas tardes. My name is Monica.
I will be translating for Monica.
Sure. Buenas tardes, my name is Monica. It's the first time I've come. So me I will know all the words that she had given, and I, as a mother, feel a little violated, violated the rights of my child. So I will continue to fight until the end.
She stays, she unites to Samantha, what she's sharing with you guys today, and she feels affected emotionally, she feels the lack of empathy, and she will continue standing for our child's rights and for education. That will be all, thank you.
Thank you. Chantae Brode.
As leader of the education, me, Dr. Narvez, I feel that you should not represent our kids.
Good evening. I came here to say that I'm hoping that it's not a practice of Hartford Public Schools to, in a situation like when we start off the school year and we're determining how many teachers are going to be hired for how many students that we have. If, one of the partisan, one of the most rewarding things I've ever did in my life for three years, I was a substitute teacher, and it's the list that you see when you pick up assignments. And the first day of school, you're approaching the first day of school, you see like a lot of assignments, and there are vacancies. So on the first day of school, kids are going into having a substitute teacher. What I'm hoping is not a practice, I'm like, wow, like it wasn't teachers, you know, putting in applications for these positions. So what I suspect is happening, and I'm hoping that it's not a practice, we know that I know for them, school is no more than 28 kids per class. So if you have, say, 55 kids, you need to hire two teachers. And if you have teachers that are applying for these jobs, you need to hire two teachers because one, not hiring one teacher and having one long-term sub, and then waiting to see how things work out after that October 1st date that we know that's when everything's counted, and see, okay, what teachers now, I have a job, and now let's push them into these places where long-term substitutes are. To me, that's unacceptable, and I'm hoping that my children go to school in a district that if we know now that we have more children than one teacher can contract who we have in her or his classroom, that the months that we, the summer months that we have to plan for the school year, that we are hiring two teachers and we're never settling for hiring one teacher, having a sub, and figuring that out later. If that's our practice, I would like to know if that's our practice, and if it's not, then it shouldn't be done anywhere in Hartford Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantae. Joshua Rosario.
Good day. The Sands School investigation sends a clear message about poverty and power. Recent state findings that the Hartford Public School District is at fault for for failing to protect students from discriminatory practices at Sands School sends a clear message about the state of education and dysfunction in the Hartford Public School System. Parents and citizens are outraged and demand accountability. We live in a society where certain groups are treated differently because of the economic and political power they possess, while other groups remain oppressed and ignored. This cannot be the case in Hartford. Imagine being a parent and hearing that your children, or a child, was given a colored sticker, dot on their back, treated as an experiment, and just like any other Hartford parent, you would demand accountability. To make matters worse, Assistant Superintendent Hamble was paid out $80,000, but conveniently was not part of the state investigative interviews. The refusal to make him unavailable to state investigators is baffling. Why do Hartford's politicians, state representatives, mayor, and common council members remain silent when they are expected to quote-unquote "rise up" in times of adversity? Their silence sends a loud message to the Hartford's citizens, who will stand up for their children. What happened at Sands School was, quite frankly, stupid, and would have had any child or parent asking why such a thing would be able to happen. Our children deserve better. We deserve a Superintendent that will fight and protect all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Polisca.
Good evening, Board of Ed members. Dr. Narvez, Jim Waring, welcome. Mr. Flores, the Board of Ed. It's great to see another parent on the Board of Ed, even though the mayor's not here. I just want to say kudos to keeping to his word of bringing more parents on the Board of Ed. I think that's great. I also would say that we have six out of eight members of the Board, I believe, are parents now. So I'm really interested to see how this Board fills its last spot, and I encourage all of you to think about the skill sets that may be missing. It's a great opportunity to bring someone on to replace Jose. I'm going to just piggyback on what a young man, Joshua Rosario, was saying, just for a bit. You know, I hear a lot about, I hear a lot of judgment being passed on you all, on you, Dr. Narvez, about what you stand for, all that stuff. You know, I would like to really believe, I have relationships with most of you, that you all stand for much, much better than what took place at Sands School. But I just want to point out that if you don't communicate what you stand for more often, then that disconnect is going to continue to exist. So I'm here today to talk not about bold communications, which is what I'm usually talking about, but just about being bold in our goals. So I'm getting to watch a lot of Olympics on my phone, and it's amazing to see how much people are striving for, and I think it's a great time for a lot of her to figure out what we're striving for. I think, you know, kudos to Hartford, the Youth Service Corps launching, First Year of Hartford Promise. I mean, we've got some bold initiatives happening in this city. Kudos to Dr. Narvez for launching Equity 2020. That is a table that is ripe for bold ideas, but I'm just going to put it out there that I don't think we're all thinking bold enough. I don't think that we're seizing this opportunity to really figure out how to take so many of the city's problems and starting to address them together, right? So if we don't just start allowing ourselves to be a little bit more bold, especially Board members who are in a position of leadership, I think we're going to miss an incredible opportunity. Same thing can be said for the chef negotiations, which I believe are starting right now, or next week, or something. I would, I don't think that this city, and the city is a plaintiff, has a position on chef. I just don't think one exists. I don't know who the person is in our city that is representing the interests of our city and of children in chef. So no time like the present to figure that out. So I would love to see Mayor Ronan be much more involved in Equity 2020, much more involved in chef, and I encourage folks to really use, achieve Hartford, other resources in the community, to think about how we can make chef work and try to reignite the civil rights flame that launched chef in the first place. Or are we going to continue to let a lot of people in suits behind closed doors make decisions on what's best for Hartford? Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Felgato. Second call, Luis Felgato. Sandra Angel. Nancy Mendez.
Good evening. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Dr. Narvez. Welcome, Mr. Flores. Tonight, we're here as a united voice from Montessori Magnet. Who we are, we're representatives of our MMCO PAC, which stands for Montessori Magnet Community Organization Parent Advocacy Committee. Our mission is, the Parent Advocacy Committee works with the MMCO, AKA PGO, the SGC, and Montessori Magnet Administrators, to implement appropriate suggestions made by the school community, organize initiatives to improve our school, and to find ways to build our community. This is more than a community, it is a dedication. We're proud that our committee representatives are diverse in cultural, social, economic, and residence. Unfortunately, many members simply could not attend tonight, but trust me, this is not a reflection of our commitment. Who I am, as you said, Nancy Mendez, I am a parent to an upper elementary student who has been in this school since 2009. I'm also the SGC Parent Chair, and I'm also a Hartford Public Schools employee in the Choice Office.
I am Rosyella Rivera. I'm the School and Family Support Service Provider for Montessori Magnet, and I'm also the parent of a lower elementary student. She's been at this school since 2011.
Okay, so going forward, I wanted to introduce to the whole Board who we are and what we're doing as a community organization. We have met with a few stakeholders from chef, Elizabeth Horne Chef, Marto Stone. We had a meeting with Superintendent Narvez and Cabinet. We also had a representative from the city, from the mayor's office. We have also reached to our community, the NRC, Southwest, and Behind the Rocks, who are also helping to facilitate a meeting with Hartford Housing Authority to help us with talks about the property behind Walmart. What we have done so far is we met with the community, and we share what we know about our current location and the future of Montessori Magnet, and we have conducted and translated a hard copy survey for our families. We have received, a total of 170 families have responded to the survey in regards to a temporary location at Moilen and McDonough. And just a quick, just want to say that our community as a whole, we feel that our school should not move to another temporary location, but stay where we are while we look for a permanent location for our school. We have asked our families to let us know whether we want to stay in our Zone 3, to move out of Zone 3, or to even consider outside of Hartford. I also want to present every member of the Board with what we shared with Dr. Narvez and the Cabinet, just to, so that you know what we, the information we have.
Give them to Christina.
All right.
She'll get them up.
And just real quick, I want to ask the Board of Education to support our request for open and prompt communication with our whole community. In the past, we feel as a community that communication hasn't been really open, and we want to make sure that we are at the table and that communication is real with us, in our families, okay? We believe that this is the opportunity of now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Ashworth.
First of all, I'd just like to say, I appreciate your work. I know how time-consuming and complicated it can be. I've attended every, almost every Board meeting since 2010. I've had some very satisfying naps. That's a joke. Before that, I worked covering the U.S. Supreme Court and Congress on the Civil Rights Law, and I'm very dedicated, having grown up in segregated schools in Louisiana, graduated high school in New Orleans. I know what it means to fight poverty, okay? And that's really what you guys are doing. You have to fight segregation, you have to go for regionalization, you can't be distracted by any one stupid sticker shock issue, but you're going to have them. You're going to have them every time. You're going to have them every week, maybe every day. So what I'm saying is, instead, please pay attention to the kids, pay attention to the neighborhood schools, pay attention to how you can each find a way to fight for the issues that you hear about, maybe not tonight, but also tonight. I know your quality. I know having talked with you, I know your quality. So my recommendation is, push it to the absolute limits on behalf of kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna J. Contras.
Good evening. My name is Anna Contra. I'm the building staff here at Sands. I've been employed since January 2015, and I've bounced around being a substitute. It's one of the hardest things in the district. Now, my experience at Sands has been amazing, not only with the principal, but with the staff and the children, as well as the parents. They have been very, very supportive, and they have allowed me to teach their children, and given me, giving myself hope that one day I will be certified, and hopefully Mr. Haradio will give me an opportunity. But this is like the best school that I've been to. I mean, I've been to many schools, and they've been great. Being at Sands has given me hope to pursue my, my teaching career, and I'm very, very happy to be here, and I'm excited about the staff as well, and the children, and the parents, because they have supported me as a substitute. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Sullivan.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Narvez, Chairman Waring, and Board members. My name is Bethany Sullivan, Principal of McDonough Middle School. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Sanchez E. Lambs in McDonough Middle School in support of the EL education contract. Our partnership with EL education has been instrumental in our work as a turnaround school. Three years ago, we had one of the highest chronic absenteeism rates in the district at 44%. At a current rate of 20%, we have decreased by 24% in three years. The staff at McDonough have collaborated with EL education and Hartford Public Schools to create a learning environment where students feel valued, safe, and connected to their learning. Simply stated, students need to like school in order to attend, and parents have to trust in where they send their children every day, or they won't send them. Relationships are everything in a middle school. Crew, community meetings, clubs, and sports have helped us foster relationships. Our next level of work is to develop student leaders. This year, we have a group of students who will receive leadership training and become crew leaders themselves, facilitating team-building activities and engaging their peers in lessons aligned to our core values. This focus on school culture, a key foundation in all EL schools, along with the introduction of restorative practices, has resulted in a 72% decrease in our outside suspension rate over the past two years. In addition, with support from EL school designers, we have made progress in our curriculum instruction to put students at the center of their learning. Our sixth-grade expedition with the Novel But Not Buddy allowed students to research the impact of trauma on youth and uncover issues within our foster care system, particularly for adolescents. Next, they designed proposals to create more trauma-sensitive schools. This year, my entire staff will participate in life-space crisis intervention training to understand trauma better and develop strategies to work with traumatized students. Our seventh-grade expedition was an oral history project where students interviewed family and community members who immigrated to the United States from the Caribbean and Central America. To follow up, a group of dedicated students formed a club to provide recommendations on how to best support immigrant families new to our community. This year, we're adding the young adult novel Enrique's Journey, the true story of a boy who traveled alone from Honduras to the United States in search of his mother who left seeking work and better opportunities for her family. This newly-designed, Common Core-aligned module will resonate with many of our students, particularly those who have experienced similar journeys and often feel isolated and invisible in American schools. Our work with EL education and Hartford Public Schools on student-centered learning and the shift to a more culturally-responsive curriculum has contributed to an 11% increase in reading proficiency, an 8% increase in math proficiency in two years, double the district growth rate. We know that we still have significant work ahead of us at McDonough. We have set aggressive goals this year to increase reading and math proficiency by 15 and 20% and to further decrease suspensions and chronic absenteeism. We need continued support from Hartford Public Schools and EL education to make We need continued support from Hartford Public Schools and EL education to make this happen. Our motto this year is "Stand Up, Speak Up, Show Up." With your continued support, I'm confident that the staff, students, and parents at McDonough will be an example of the change agents needed to make the vision of Hartford Public Schools a reality as we transform our world. We are proud, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Reports. Chair has a report, Dr. Narves.
Yes, good evening, members of the board and the community. I would like to start again by thanking Principal Gerardo Heredia for his leadership and for hosting us once again this summer. I do want to give an update after the report of findings for SAN and also talk a little bit more about the progress that has been made here at SAN School. While there were some discrepancies with the findings of fact in the report that we are addressing with the CSDE, we continue to take the matter very seriously. We did not wait to take action. Our response to these concerns was immediate and comprehensive, and still continues. Several recommendations in the report fully align with the work that we have implemented as a district, including: We have provided training on diversity and cultural competency to increase leadership capacity on cultural proficiency and decision-making, leadership, instructional practices, and engagement. Training sessions were held every month the past school year at principal professional development, as well as during cabinet meetings and with other staff meetings. During the 2015-16 school year, administrators participated in monthly professional learning sessions titled "Seeing Ourselves in the Work" that focused on cultural competency. The topics and objectives for the sessions included in August: Building Our Equity Lens and Cultural Identity Autobiography, and creating safe and supportive environments for all students, including our LGBTQ students. In October 2015: Equity and Access for High-Quality Tier One Instruction. In November 2015: Assess Ourselves on the Cultural Competency Continuum and Share in Truth with Our Fellow Leaders and Colleagues, Discussing Practices and Goals That Can Be Used to Move Ourselves and Help Others on the Journey. December 2015: We Connected the Session Directly to the SAN Incident and We Learned to Use Tools to Improve Our Practice of Courageous Conversations and Other Equity Tools. In January 2016: We Applied the Skills We Developed and the Tool We Explored to Lead for Equity and Access, and We Developed Case Studies to Address Real Problems of Equity. In March and May of 2016: We Again Worked to Apply the Skills That We Developed and the Tools We Explored to Engage in a Design Thinking Protocol to Remove Barriers to Equity and Access. And in June 2016: We Revisited the Purpose and Practice of Cultural Autobiographies. We Practiced the Tools That We Had Explored Throughout the Year, and We Engaged in Reflection and Assessment on Our Individual and Collective Capacity as We Were Planning for the Next School Year, the school year that's up and coming. We Also Had a Session During New Teacher Induction in August 2015, Facilitated by a Leader from Crepe titled "Creating a Culturally Responsive Classroom Environment." And I want to say these trainings are continuing into this school, starting with a keynote addressed tomorrow to our administrators right by the Discovery Center, we're deepening our partnership with the Discovery Center. And the keynote will focus on equity and cultural competence. In addition, we will be taking the following actions in response to the recommendations made in the report, in some cases have already done so. The Director of Student Support Services will review the current policies and procedures regarding school-based crisis teams, along with the Director of Security. A school-based training is being scheduled for SAN staff nearing the beginning of the school, near the beginning of the school year, excuse me. The Assistant Superintendent for Talent Management has been designated as the point person to whom staff complaints concerned should be submitted regarding school activities. And the district is working on a more formal procedure that will be shared with staff when it's completed and will also be placed in the employee handbook. Assistant Superintendents will meet at the start of the school year with the Chief School Improvement Officer to review the protocol developed for review and professional learning within the district. SAN has moved well beyond the recommended equity audit and has been working with the Discovery Center to support its school-based efforts focused on issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. This work will continue into the coming school year. Last year, staff at SAN participated in seven sessions with the Discovery Center focused on cultural competency and racial equity. And again, during this upcoming school year, they will continue that partnership and that work. In addition, they participated in six days of professional development on restorative justice. Professional development was held in the areas of special education and English language learners, first administrators. Just this week, yesterday and today, we had deep sessions, both serving English language learners and students with special needs and had a legal perspective as well. Sherman and Goodwin came in and did a session for us on serving students with special needs. Guidelines on Communication were also shared with administrators and are continuing to evolve and develop and will be shared with administrators throughout training in the coming year. And we continue to work with you at our Committee on Family and Community Engagement to continue our series on family-friendly schools and our Forum on Race Raisings and Equity, so much more to come in the coming school years as we continue this work, not only with our internal school community, but also with the community at large. So we remain committed to our cultivating equity and excellence agenda and will continue to refine and deepen our work in these areas. And I don't want this to be the only story for SAN School this evening. As reported earlier, SAN had great gains on all equity indicators. I'm very proud of the work that's unfolded at SAN. This school is making consistent progress to decrease chronic absenteeism from 40% to 26.4% in one year, and out-of-school suspensions from 244 to 27 in one year. To improve culture and climate, and there are also increases in reading proficiency and math proficiency on the math assessment. We know there's still much work to do, but I would like to thank the entire SAN School community for their great work this past school year and for what's to come in the new year. I'd like to welcome our new board member, Julio Flores. I'm pleased to welcome you, and just give a little bio about our newest member. Mr. Flores is a Southland resident and very active in our community, both the community at large and our school community. He previously served on the board of several nonprofit community organizations and also served as an associate pastor at the Metropolitan Community Church of Hartford. Julio Flores has been a parent leader and served as the School Governance Council Chair at the Latino Studies Academy at Burnt, and was featured in our yearly celebration of SBCs on the panel this past June. And he was also the SGC Chair at McDonough Expeditionary Learning School from 2010 to 2012. Mr. Flores earned his Masters in Business Administration from Adelphi University in New York, and he currently consults for the Office of Emerging Ministries at Metropolitan Community Churches. I join our board, and on behalf of our students, families, and staff, I welcome you and look forward to working with you to cultivate equity and excellence so that every student in Hartford thrives and every school is high-performing. Welcome again, we're glad you're here. The opening of schools is just around the corner, so we are busily preparing for the first day of school. The first day is Tuesday, August 30th, and approximately 21,700 students will embark on a new journey for this school year, and we will be ready for them. I would like to recognize our teachers, administrators, operations staff, and central office staff who've been working hard to prepare for the opening of schools. We will open up with nearly 1,700 teachers, 46 school leaders, and we expect to serve 20,000 lunches and do 220 bus runs to transport 8,600 students. So you can hear, it's been busy. I'd like to shout out members of my staff and colleagues who are putting forth every effort to make sure that schools are ready and welcoming. First Day of School Bus Tour, again, connected to the first day of school. It's our tradition to have a first day of school bus tour. And this year, we're visiting University High School of Science and Engineering, West Middle School, as it opens up in its new building. I haven't seen it yet, so can't wait to see the newly renovated West Middle School and Alfred Eber Elementary School. So I want to thank you to enhance the principles of those schools, Principal Holen, Principal SD, Principal Pierre Maxwell, and their entire school communities for opening their doors to us on this very busy day. So I hope that you'll join us as we visit these three schools and kick off the new school year. Convocation is coming too. I'm excited to announce that on Monday, August 29th, we'll welcome all of our teachers back to the start of the school year at Convocation. This year, the event will be held in the auditorium at Buckley High School. So again, I hope you'll join me in welcoming our teachers and showing them the support that they deserve as we kick off the new school year. I'm also looking forward to being impressed and inspired, as always, by our talented young people as they perform to welcome their teachers and leaders back to work. It's always also inspiring to interact with our teachers and other school staff and to hear from our mayor, our board chair, and our 2016 Teacher of the Year, Gary Luttrell. Convocation signifies a time of renewal and rebirth as we begin to craft the story of school year 2016, 2017 together. Again, I'd like to thank all of the staff and my colleagues who've been working very hard to prepare for yet another stellar convocation event. Hope to see you there. One school shout-out tonight, the good work and the recognitions have not stopped, even though it's the summertime. So EB Cannelli School has been awarded the 2016 National Network for Education Renewals, Richard W. Clark Award for exemplary partner schoolwork this year. So that was a mouthful, I'll tell you what it stands for. This award recognizes the long-term commitment to creating and sustaining partnerships that are committed to the notion of renewal and success of all those learners in school partnerships. And Cannelli School has had an ongoing partnership with the NEAG School of Education at the University of Connecticut. And this is an outstanding exemplar of the kind of partnership that can keep transformation and renewal moving forward in schools. And this award certainly highlights all the good work that has come from this partnership. So we're really proud of the leadership and the staff there at Cannelli School and congratulate them on winning this prestigious recognition. Equity 2020, let me give you a quick update on that work. The last meeting of the Equity 2020 Advisory Council took place on July 21st. We reviewed some additional enrollment analysis and some preliminary data on school operational capacities. We also discussed again our purpose and criteria to develop a long-term facilities plan. Everyone knows the need for that in Hartford, and we've all seen the consequences of not having such a plan. The team again reminded us that this is not about closing schools, it's about maximizing resources, our dollars, materials, facilities, program opportunities, staff, every resource that we use to educate our children, and making sure that every Hartford family has access to a high-performing school. The next meeting of the Equity 2020 Advisory Group will convene on Wednesday, August 24th, next week, at Burr Elementary School. And at this meeting, we'll continue to review data, dig deeper into enrollment and capacity, and we'll be starting to see how all of those pieces fit together. So I want to thank again all of the stakeholders who are involved in that work. It's been a lot of work and a lot of meetings, and still more to come. And I want to remind you too that we are taping it, and the meeting is on local public access channel 19. So if you can't make it in-person to the meeting, we videotape it because we want to make sure everyone who wants to be part of the process can be part of it and that it's a transparent process. We also have a page on our website where we put up all the minutes and the highlights from the meetings, there's a running list of FAQs. So I'm pleased, and we want you to take advantage of all the information as you can. My expectation and commitment to the people of Hartford has been that this process will be transparent and inclusive. And I really again want to thank all of you who have been part of this work and who've been able to attend our meetings, and I look forward to our discussions next week. Just a final note, we're in the process of compiling all of our results into an annual report, which will be ready soon. This report will tell the story of the work accomplished this past year. I'm excited to report that this school, we have seen positive movement on every equity indicator. Again, we've reduced out-of-school suspensions by 27.5% in one year. We're on target and exceeding our target for this year. And we're well on track to continue dramatically reducing suspensions over the next school year. As we've seen in the first two years of my tenure, we've nearly cut out-of-school suspensions in half. We've also seen strong reductions in chronic absenteeism, again exceeding the target, at a 4.6% overall reduction in chronic absenteeism across the system. Some gains in our academic data as well, both reading and math scores going up, and also exceeding our target on things that I say adults are obligated to do in terms of increasing access to college and career readiness opportunities for students, helping to make sure that students get their college applications in and get that college acceptance, and helping to build meaningful student success plans for our students, again exceeding the targets that we had set for ourselves this past school year. So these results are certainly helping us to build momentum to keep going to the next level of work. We've made great progress and we have much work to do. And so I want to again commend our hard-working staff and students for all of their efforts and the improvement that we've seen in year one of cultivating equity and excellence. So that concludes the superintendent's report. I want to thank you for listening, thank you for being a part of our community and our work.
Thank you. Move to item seven, business agenda. The chair has an item to add on, which I'll move to add on. We'll take a two-thirds vote of the body. The addition is add item one, which everyone on the board has received. And I'll read it. Background, Special Act 017, Established Hartford School Building Committee to oversee all school construction projects taking place in Hartford Public Schools. Three members of the HSBC must be selected and approved by the Board of Education. Alternates to those members may likewise be approved by the Board of Education. The HSP members presently designated by the Board of Editor, the Superintendent, Chairman Waring, and Mr. Rushup. The recommendations that effective August 15th, Hartford Board of Education appoints Dr. Jose Colombia to serve on Hartford School Building Committee as an alternate for any of its designated members as necessary. Is there second to my motion? It's been moved and seconded. And I'll explain why this is necessary for this desirable. Questions raised yesterday at the HSBC is the ability of Dr. Colombia to serve as the superintendent's alternate. Normally, I'd bring this up as not even regular business, but the next school building committee meeting is the day before the next board meeting. So I ask that it be written on today as a special item to be added on and acted upon today. We've traditionally done this by unanimous vote, or actually without objection, so I don't see any issue. Does anyone else want to debate the motion? We'll add this on to the agenda. Waring, nothing, the chair will call. All in favor of adding this to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Okay, it's now added to the agenda. And I said what I want to say about it. If anyone else wants to debate or question the resolution, I'd be happy. Otherwise, we'll call a question on that. Sure.
I would like to have had more notice because I really don't even understand what the building committee does and its whole function to begin with. So this would have been a great time to sort of explain all that at once as it relates to how he's going to be an alternate for whom, why, so, and so on, how that works, and what the process, what the process is and how it means to us. Simply because, again, there's been issues, and so we create, understand how the whole thing works. But other than that, I'd really bear little to say.
Sure. The Hartford School Building Committee is a body responsible for managing all school construction projects. If we want to build a school, we might say we want to build a school, and the city has to approve the money to do it. But ultimately, it's HSBC that oversees the people that oversee contractors who build the school. The HSBC has to vote on contracts, like Program Manager, which is our chief artist, architects who build and design the schools, contractors to build them, change orders to contracts, things like that. All change orders typically handled by a change order committee of the HSBC. The HSBC is comprised of two members of the board, superintendent, one other member from the Board of Ed, John Motley, who's appointed by the other members, and then two members of City Council, two people appointed by them there. I believe that's the composition. And so ultimately, HSBC is the body that manages all school construction. So if, you know, we're building, we're borrowing, you have a complaint about the progress of the work, that's the meeting to go to. If you have complaints about the money being appropriate, you go to the council. If you don't like sort of specifications for the school, you come see us. But if you have a complaint about the actual management of the construction, that's what HSBC does. Obviously, you have to have a forum president to conduct business, which typically consists of approving contracts or change orders to contracts, and then taking reports on progress in various construction projects or issues that have arisen.
So you like the stadium, the stadium board, because it's cool.
Yes, after things get built, yes.
I had nothing to do with that. I'll thank you.
Just stating facts. Is there anything else on this? The chair will call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Next item, which is now two, resolution, approval of the demagnetization of journalism. Next item, which is now two, Resolution, the approval of the demagnetization of Journalism and Media Academy and renaming it the Thomas J. Snell Weaver Journalism and Media Academy. The recommended action is that Hartford Board of Education authorize the Director Superintendent to initiate the process with the State Department of Education and demagnetize Journalism and Media and Magnet Academy and convert it to a district school primarily to pose to Hartford resident students named the Thomas J. Snell Weaver Journalism and Media Academy effective July 1, 2017. Chair will move adoption of this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Nervous?
Oh, this is really you, right?
Okay.
I just wouldn't have liked reading the resume.
Oh, all right. Well, right, it's, I mean...
We gave it to you.
All right. There's two things happening here, at least that I have moved. The first is, this school will be on the Weaver campus in 2019 when that opens. And I think it is important, I think it's a sense of this board, that it's important that to the greatest extent possible, we preserve and further all things Weaver, including the name and its traditions. And I thought it was appropriate, and I think the members agree with me, that the name of this academy reflects Thomas J. Snell Weaver as part of that name to, you know, not just branding for marketing and recruiting the money, but also to show that this really is Weaver and is part of Weaver and is going to be part of Weaver going forward. The second and more substantive thing is to demagnetize this school. Those of us that were on the board when it was magnetized in the first place, which I think at this point is only Mr. Cotto and myself, this was one of a number of schools that were offered up at the conclusion of another lengthy round of chef negotiations to try to bring more magnet schools online. The thinking was that it was in a new building and had a great program and facility, very innovative, and that it would be an excellent candidate as a magnet school because it would be a good trough for suburban students. That has plainly not proven in the U.K. To get the school, the school has not drawn even close to a sufficient number of white or Asian students which qualify as non, as qualified as non-minority under chef. The result of that is, is that you had to suppress the enrollment of Hartford students because under chef, you have to maintain a balance. It's 25% white, white or Asian. And when you don't have sufficient numbers of those students, you have to stop taking non-white students who might be interested in going to the school. And I don't think that anyone believes, at least I haven't talked to anyone who believes that there is any real likelihood in the relatively near future of the school ever coming close to chef compliance, given where it is, which means that we built a school with state and local taxpayer dollars, whose seats are a significant portion empty and whom we can't fill because we can't take non-white students. When you think about the purpose of chef was to help Hartford students who are predominantly not, almost entirely non-white, and we're building schools to help them, which they can't go to, that is nonsensical and very hard to understand. But from a very practical perspective, we have a great school with a great program, which is nowhere near close to full. And as long as it remains a magnet school, it is very unlikely there will be any more full than it is today at any time in the relatively near future. That is unfair, frankly, to the taxpayers who paid to build the school, and it's unfair to the people in Hartford who love to send their kids to go to school there and the kids who love to go to school there but cannot. Also, the Weaver project was conceived and intended to be a neighborhood school project. It was intended to be for the benefit primarily of North End students, but more generally for Hartford students, and not to become a magnet school. One of the things that we had to do in order to secure the amount of reimbursement we needed from the state was agree to book and sell there, which immediately made part of the school a magnet school and not just strictly a neighborhood school. The mayor made a public commitment that the school would be mostly a non-magnet school, and I agree with that commitment, and I think most if not all the members of the board do as well. So demagnetizing JMA, a school which has been very unsuccessful at attracting white students, would also further than the promise to the North End that they would have a first-class facility that would be devoted to their students and their children and not be just a magnet facility which would draw in children from other districts. So in light of the Weaver construction and in light of where we sit with these compliance issues around journalism and media, I believe it was appropriate to bring this forward as I indicated last month that I would. I strongly support this resolution and I would hope that the other members of the board would as well, for the reasons that I've stated. Nothing else on this, if the other members would like to debate or question it. Yeah, Mr. Rusher.
Yeah.
And then Mr. Stollins.
If the board votes to demagnetize a school that is a magnet, magnet school already, does it, does this go up to the state also for approval?
No, we have the ultimate authority over that. There is a process that we have to go through with the state, which we've done at least once before with Ex School A. But ultimately, it was, it's for us to say yes or no. I think although there are administrative issues that have to be resolved with the state, but like I said, we've done that once before, and the superintendent can speak to those details if you're interested, looking much more than I could. Mr. Stollins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief. Honestly, most of the community feels that this school shouldn't have been magnetized in the first place, and I tend to agree with that sentiment. I appreciate the fact that the school is being returned to the community. It is a state of the community, it's our flagship school. I just want to publicly acknowledge and apologize to Principal Mr. Leonard Epps for my lack of communication prior to this, forgive me for that. But how cool is it for a former Weaver teacher to become Principal Weaver High? So that is outstanding, I'm excited for it. I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart, really I do. Thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Flores, I know you knew, but thank you. Thank you. I appreciate this so much. A lot of people in the community are confused but excited at the fact that our children will be able to take advantage of WQTQ Zoom, will be able to take advantage of the television, studio in the program, more importantly, the curriculum to be expanded. Mr. Epps, the handcuffs are off and you can create and teach. No, you really, you create and teach the way that you want to, you follow your passion. He was my teacher and he was instrumental in me being a board member and in running and participating in politics. So he has magic, trust me. You just, just let him chime, he will, he will show you. I'm happy that we can celebrate Weaver again. I would like for us to support it. I'm also excited that Consella will be participating under the Weaver umbrella. Because honestly, I mean, how excited is it? It's going to be really exciting to see African-American kids and white kids and Spanish kids actually under the Weaver banner participating in sports and probably doing coprograms amongst the school and amongst the academy. So honestly, this is what the chef experiment should have been. This is going to be, in my opinion, the flagship for what chef should be in the future. Not forced integration, but a gradual, general volunteer participation from families who are willing to, to be a part of an experiment, a social experiment to advance our community. And I am grateful for that, I'm very thankful for that. And I promise you, you will not regret this at all, if I have to go there every day. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stollins. Stella.
So I want to echo Craig's sentiments. I'm also Weaver alumni, really excited that we're going to be restoring Principal Epps back to his home. I didn't have him as a teacher, but I have Baba Jihad, and I tend to love Jones, and I'm really excited that we're going to be able to, to push the quality, and I know that you are the person to do that there, so I'm really excited. I think this is the right decision to restore the school to the neighborhood. I think that it's really awesome that we can do this and kind of promote the housing in that area too, because in Zone 2, there really aren't a lot of options for high schools. So I'm really, really excited that we're doing this for the community and that we're able to push this initiative forward and not be bogged down by the politics and really focus on kids and getting them the quality and opportunity that they need within their neighborhoods.
Anything else on this? Hearing now the Chair calls, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Consent agenda, the Chair moves to take up items B2, 3, and 4 as a single item. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, in debate, are taking it up as one. Hearing now the Chair calls, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Carries? Is there any debate or question or any of consent agenda items?
Yes.
Mr. Stollins.
I'm still a little shy about some of the programs. I just wanted to know, I just had a few questions about both, actually. One, it shows both questions.
Yeah, next question. You have the floor.
Thank you. With the EL program, I was trying to turn this page, I just had a question on. However, how does this work? I know we invested in this a couple of times before, and I know at every tier that intellectual property, they all own rest that stuff. How, my question is, how are we extracting, I guess, those best practices? I know that you are keen about that, but how are we extracting those best practices so even though we have to relinquish control of the intellectual property of it, we still maintain a work analogy of how it works so that we don't have to continue to invest in this program?
Really good question. I'll say two things, and then if, you know, there are any more details, we have our leaders in the audience who can really speak to what it, how it works in greater detail. But again, I'm going to say two things about it. First of all, the longer, it's not a permanent partnership, right? The longer you're in the network, the cost decreases, right? Because it's built on the principle that you are building capacity, right? It is about practices, and that's the second thing I would say. It is really about boosting leadership practice, teacher practice, it's really good professional development, and you're right, that's what we try to invest in, instead of just programs saying, how are we teaching people so we don't have to rely on outside vendors forever? So just to highlight again, the longer you're in, the less it costs, and eventually you don't need the network because you have learned the teachings of what they have to offer.
So, I mean, and this question is going for both items, but how do you, how do we evaluate that? Like, how do we measure the success or the impact of what was done with professional learning and professional development? Principal Sullivan said that there were minimal, okay, I'm not going to say minimal gains, because I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but she said gains. But I was curious as to how, what kind of gains, how many, how many percentage points has it moved? Again, because again, that's a general statement, we had gains and we have a long way to go. But how do we actually know that this investment is translating to the classroom and actually getting kids to learn?
Well, ultimately, again, we use our equity indicators and our achievement data, that's the bottom line, right? Student data and student achievement, and also indicators of culture and climate of a school, right? Not everything, not every indicator, but again, that's the bottom line. We want our students to be learning more. Principal Sullivan did refer to some of the data and the gains at her school. Again, I don't have it in front of me, but there has been dramatic improvement in terms of chronic absenteeism and suspensions at her school. At the other schools in the network, we see strong student achievement to the point that they're some of our highest performing neighborhood schools. Again, dramatic gains. We can get you the specific data if you'd like to see it, but again, to the point that they're among our highest performers in terms of neighborhood schools.
Well, I would like to, simply because I'm curious about the stats for reading for like core, the hardcore, not necessarily the indicator, I could equity indicator for this, the hardcore data for that. And just like with the other, the Rising Network, this is, it has nothing to do with nursing. And so I'm kind of curious at how it supports theme when it really has nothing to do with nursing. And you can recall when we were at the budget at City Hall, one of the City Council members actually used nursing in their stores to sort of clothe us over the head, you know, and say that we were not affected. So how, how, how does this refute that misconception and how does it support theme?
You're right in that it's not specifically designed to boost the nursing theme, right? There are other initiatives going on at the school to help that. This is specifically to address student achievement with a particular focus on ninth grade, because we know how important that is for student success in completing high school on time, course completion, doing well in those core courses, attendance, not being in trouble, right, and having suspensions or discipline, all of those extremely important indicators. So this is designed to focus on comprehensive support for ninth graders. There's academic support building as well as social emotional support for students as well, to address issues that might be getting in the way for them coming to school, being present for learning in the classroom. So it's to address that issue that you raised, right? Held up those, you know, low academic achievement. This is designed to help turn that around and again, to focus on ninth grade because we know that that's absolutely critical for students to not only be college and career-ready, but to graduate and graduate on time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stollins. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to do this right now. I'm curious to know how many, how many programs support journalism. So for example, this is maybe, excuse me, nursing. If this is a grant to support the ninth grade, what are we doing for the 10th, 11th, you know, and how cohesive this is? So I would like, you know, at a later date, not now, at a later date, to figure that out.
Put together, sure. Principal Brady Shanley is in the, in the audience and is happy to talk about it and are happy to share that at a later date as well, to see how all the pieces fit together, because that's absolute wisdom.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rusher.
Yeah, I just thought, I can discuss expeditionary learning, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just going around.
You can discuss any of these three items.
Oh, I thought we voted on it.
No, we voted, we voted to take it up as a single item.
Oh, oh, that, that's what I wanted to do too. I was afraid to make that motion. I'd be told by the Chair and I was out of order. Now, question, a question about expeditionary learning. Is this a three-year program?
It can be more than a three-year program, but it, we don't stay forever with them as a complete partner.
And how long have we been in there so far?
Assistant Superintendent Carvel, if you want to come up and speak to it, you can speak to it. I know schools have been in a different amounts of time, so you can give the specifics.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
In the case of Boylan School, we love, they have been in the network, the Expeditionary Learning Program for five years.
Five years.
Sanchez, Principal Resnick, this is their second year and they'll be going into their third year. And McDonough Middle School, Principal Bethany Sullivan, they'll be going into their fourth year.
Now, in this, in this period, have you seen any increase in ability or scores that are worth remarking on?
We have. If you would like to hear in particular each one of the schools and their progress to date, each one of the principals is more than willing to share their, their progress.
I'm curious to hear.
Sure.
These are designated as high-performing schools?
The original intention, the reason why we entered into the program and the partnership with Expeditionary Learning was based on their, the indication of the school as a low-performing school six years ago. And this was one of our turnaround efforts within each one of the schools respectively.
So they came in as low-performing and you identified them as high-performing because you'd like to see them perform.
They, they entered low-performing and right now...
And that's somewhat, to me, that's somewhat a little confusing. I thought a high-performing school was one that was performing at a high rate, and you're saying we're going to try to get them to that point.
It was a.
And, and are they there? Have they made significant improvement to justify the cost?
They have made significant improvement, yes, to your question.
And this program has anything to do with classroom procedures?
It is an all-encompassing program. Um, in other words, it looks at the whole profile of the school through social, emotional, um, building procedures, professional learning, pedagogical shifts. It is a, a complete program.
That seems, uh, what we're supposed to be doing as teachers and administrators in the first place. So, are you just repeating or augmenting this? In what manner? Uh, you got people coming in from the outside, uh, yes or no?
Yes.
And these people are teachers?
Each one of the schools has a school designer.
And a school, I'm sorry, a school what?
A school designer.
Oh, okay. A teacher?
They have been in the classroom in the past and now they work for Expeditionary Learning. And they serve as a thought partner with the building principal and their leadership team to look at how they make positive impact either in student achievement, academic progress, expeditions, as Bethany alluded to, um, earlier this evening.
And this is only a classroom part?
It, it happens in the classroom. It happens on the ball field. It, it's, um.
Well, that seems to be, uh, rather extensive. You've got people going all over the place. Are they neighborhood people? Those, you know, are the designer, is the designer one from Parkford or, or do they come from elsewhere to tell you how to do something?
Uh, they're from, they work for Expeditionary Learning, so they may.
I'm sorry.
They work for the Expeditionary Learning, EL education, so they're consultants that work for that program, that organization.
Well, I'm saying, at, at what time will they leave? I mean, not the building per se, what time will you say, we've done our job and now we're, we go elsewhere?
Uh, the goal for each one of the schools is to receive their credentialing so that they are considered a credentialed EL school. Both Moilen and McDonough should be entering into their credentialing. Um, at that point, we have impacted the student achievement data and we have implemented the tenants of an EL school, um, to a high standard.
And this also, this is wide-ranging, you, you deal with the neighborhood, you deal with the parents, is this right?
Yeah.
You deal with the student, with his interaction with other students?
Yes, sir.
And where do you do that?
Um, it's embedded into the school model.
I mean, you got a designer, correct?
Yes. Would you like to hear?
And he not by himself or she's not by herself, uh, is there, are, do you have a team that comes in and does something?
Yes.
And the team are teachers, uh, is composed of teachers?
And, and coaches, academic coaches.
Oh, coaches. Could you describe a coach, please?
Certainly. Um, I'll give you an example of how they would use their coach. Um, in the case of Sanchez School entering into their second year, it is very important for an Expeditionary Learning School to have crew, that morning meeting, that they, each teacher greets their child, um, their children, and they build a community. The coach may help Principal Resnick and the leadership team implement crew, develop the curriculum for crew, and then help observe crew in action, um, so that teachers are receiving feedback and seeing high-performing other teachers implementing crew. And so that that curriculum is ubiquitously, um, implemented throughout the school. Best practice, maybe from Moilen School, would be shared with Sanchez School. Or the teachers from Sanchez School can share some of their best, best practices with the teachers at Moilen.
And this takes place during classroom time or after school?
After school, during, during class, yes.
Not disruptive?
Uh, no, it's embedded.
I mean, I'm thinking of somebody, a teacher coming into teacher class and has a supposed lesson plan, and are you hovering over them or something in that manner?
No, it's done, it's done in concert and in collaboration with the teachers.
And, and when do they talk to each other? Before class?
During their planning time, yes.
During their what time?
Their planning time, teacher preparation time.
Planning time, yeah. Okay. And then you're finished when, as I said before, when you're, when are you finished?
When schools.
When the school said you're through with your.
Reach their credentialing phase, yes.
Credential?
Their EL credential. When they've, um, implemented the tenants of EL, they'll receive their credential.
You mean if they increase the grade level or their reading scores go up?
And, and multiple other, uh, components of Expeditionary Learning, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I, I, Mr. Flores?
Uh, I'm, I'm a bit confused about the time because my, my son was, uh, at McDonough, but I met Principal Sullivan in sixth grade and he's now going into 12th grade. So, that's six years, not the four or five that we mentioned earlier.
They, they, at that time?
Yes.
McDonough was not an Expeditionary Learning, it was not, 2011, 12th, first year for McDonough.
But it was called McDonough Expeditionary Learning.
Mm-hmm.
It's still something, five, six years to eight.
Is your, is your question in reference to that, the implementation that first year and then, um?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm asking about the, the whole timing of this thing. Say, say, my son was in there in sixth grade, he's now in 12th grade.
Principal Sullivan can talk about the original onset, um, of the implementation of EL at that time. Um, there was a reset when there was a change in administration and Bethany came on board three years ago as the principal. And since then, there has been a reset at McDonough around implementing highly, high implementation of EL.
So, start over?
Yes. Prior to Bethany, as a matter of fact, um, McDonough had a increased turnover of their teaching staff as well.
Any else on this? Ms. Taylor and then Ms. Lamble?
Taylor.
No, Ms. Taylor and then Ms. Taylor and then Ms. Lamble.
Um, so, my question is really, um, about contract approval, which we seem to be doing a lot of. I'm wondering if maybe in like the annual report, if we could get something, or if there is something that already exists that says, um, either like district-wide or school-based, what additional services we're paying out for contractually, like professional development and/or, um, like wrap around service, I'm thinking about City Connects and like we do a lot of this contract approval, so I'd like to be able to compare that to like the equity indicators of what we're paying out contractually.
Yeah, most definitely. The Board asked us, gosh, two, two years ago now, to take a look at all the contracts and we do a better job of anticipating and also have dramatically reduced them. Um, so we have compiled them because we use that to plan out our year of things that we need to bring with you, so happy to share that with you.
Awesome, thank you.
Ms. Lamble?
I just had a question about, um, the, I, I think that the three schools are K to five and then there's, um, McDonough, which is the middle school. Was there, in selecting schools, I know you spoke about it a little bit in response to Mr. Reggie's question, is how the schools were selected, but is there anything in, in inherent in like the EL model that is more suited to these schools being K to five or is that a thought that they are? I mean, I don't, most of our schools are K to eight, so it just struck me that these three schools are, I think, among our only K to five schools and they all have this common theme, so I just know if you couldn't speak to that at all?
The model doesn't preclude the grade level. Um, EL, EL education is a K-12 model. Um, on the onset, Moilen and McDonough, Moilen, um, being the first school that entered into the EL, um, work plan, and then McDonough because the K-five students at Moilen feed into McDonough Middle School. And Sanchez coming on board two year, coming on board two years ago was also purposeful because Sanchez students would also matriculate into McDonough Middle School. And that was the reason why we added Sanchez into the network, the EL network.
All right, and there's a third school, which is Parkville, which also I think feeds into McDonough, but.
It did not.
It's K to five?
It's K-five, but does not have the EL model.
This is a broader question, but I just like us to think about, well, you said it goes all the way to high school, but we don't, I don't know if there's a, I think, I don't think there is currently like an actual pathway right out of eighth grade to continue on in EL.
There is none for these students.
Okay. I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Any else? Ms. Taylor?
I think maybe what I'm hearing and what people are kind of beating around on my side of fence over here is this concept of when schools achieve certification, say there is principal turnover and there's staff turnover, how sustainable is the model if you discontinue this level of fiscal appropriation and certification? And I think maybe that's what you were getting to when you talked about the restart with Principal Sullivan.
Um, at this point, the, the sustainability is, is, is there. This has been very purposeful. Um, you'll notice the difference between the contracts this year and last year, the reduction of, um, times and monies because of the building of capacity within the schools that have been in the network long. Hence, the reason why the, the contracts for, um, Moilen and McDonough are reduced compared to Sanchez, which is in, going into their third year. Um, the goal will be that there's a sunset date on, on this relationship on purpose because we have both capacity and, and both Moilen and McDonough would be the first two schools that will have the sunset date based on the work that we know we've done, um, and the results we've had and the change of practice. Both teacher practice, um, student voice, you heard, um, Bethany referred to student voice and student-led, um, learning. And, and that's how we know we're tipping, the, the shifting from being worried about implementing and becoming a high implementation site. And, and that's the goal, um, all three of the leaders here.
Well, I think I want to just be a little more specific and say that schools are flexible, they're fluid in their bodies, right? Principals leave, teachers leave, students leave, there's a lot of attrition. So, maybe can you speak specifically from other schools that have achieved certification and these types of instances have happened? What level of continued resource and support would they need to be able to ensure that these great schools in which the principals are implementing this model would be able to do so in absence of this particular group of administrators and students?
Within, within Hartford, the, the only three EL schools we have are the preschools that are represented this evening in the model, the bigger model, the unitization. As a whole, the, once they receive their credentialing, they become a demonstration site and, and schools come to visit them to look at the pedagogy and the practice. You're, you belong to EL, um, and as a school that bears that distinction, um, but the, the practice now becomes embedded into the fabric and is sustained based on, um, the learnings that we have all acquired throughout the implementation phase. Um, it's similar to, um, paying, paying into a network dues. Um, you don't need to go through the learning every year as deep as you have in the years past, but you are a, a member of the EL network.
So, I think what I hear you getting at is how the sustainability piece. Um, the first two years, Mr. Flores, when you had, had a child there, were honestly chaotic. There was a 70% teacher turnover rate both years and the principal left after two years. You'll notice when I refer to the data and the gains over the last three years, I'm essentially looking at my first year as acting principal three years ago as a starting point, and you'll notice significant gains in the last three years. If you look over five, those first two, the data was a little up and down and all over the place, so we're really looking now for these three. My focus has been built on teacher capacity. So, the example I gave earlier of the module on Enrique's journey, I have EL school designers working with my English language teachers, my, my ELA teachers. I'm designing a module that our students can connect to the reading, so we're swapping out some of the novels that they don't really have interest in or connect to. This is more culturally relevant to them. Once these modules are well-written, comic book aligned, we have excellent assessments and performance tests with them to kind of emulate the, the modules for novels that didn't quite connect with our students. That's in place and that's a huge piece. So, if I have an English teacher who moves to a different school next year, at least the curriculum is more solid, much more solid than it was three years ago. Now, last year, we had 90% of our classroom teachers, over 90% return. This year, knock on wood, I know it's August 17th, but, or 16th, I have over 90% returning again. So, again, over the three years, very, very high retention rate of teachers. That's very uncommon in neighborhood middle schools across the city. If you look, many principals struggle in seventh and eighth grade with keeping, um, seven, 12 certified teachers in the middle grades. We've done an excellent job with that and in my opinion, a big piece is the amount of time we invest in building their capacity, growing them professionally, creating a safe school culture, they're excited to come to school every day. That was not the case five, six years ago, so.
Thank you. That is really helpful.
Any else on this? Hearing nothing, Chair.
I do have a more question, I'm sorry. I know that, I, I'm hearing that, you know, one of the, the main reason it sounds like why we are having this model or any other model in a neighborhood school, um, which many of our neighborhood schools now have learning models, um, is, you know, it's not, it sounds like it's a, you know, accredited way of, um, teaching that would boost performance hopefully at these schools and that's why we are experimenting, you know, with models in our neighborhood schools. But I, I also wonder, is it, and perhaps this is a more of a question for you, is it also, um, something that we're doing to make our neighborhood schools more attractive from a marketing standpoint with families? I mean, I know these are choice schools, like in Parkford Choice and also one of them is a reverse open choice school, I think EL is. Like, do we have any data or is it even a consideration in putting these kinds of themes, mo, models? I know there's probably a difference between a model and a theme, but in, in neighborhood schools, is that a consideration and, and are we tracking that or looking at that? And do we have any evidence of helping, hurting?
Yeah, I, I would say we have decreased our focus on school designs over the past couple of years, to tell you the truth. I mean, this was in place in something that is working and strengthening these schools because it's a focus on practice and we, again, focus less on design, on more on practice in the classroom or something like the acceleration agenda, which is in a school design, but is support at three different levels for the schools, for leaders, for teams of teachers and for individual students. So, um, you know, all that to say, I think we've, we've just put less emphasis on that over time, whereas before, as we're building out the district, again, this precedes me, that my understanding was we're building an all-choice district and working so that every school has a need. Again, we've come away from that so that we can focus more on instruction in the classroom, but this partnership certainly fits in with that focus because of strong focus on instructional practice, leadership practice, culture and climate in schools, um, even though it is a, technically a, a school design, um, but it fits in with how we have focused on teaching and learning in the district. Thank you.
Any else on this? Hearing nothing, the Chair calls it all in favor, consent agenda, taking it up as one item, signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any against? Against? It carries, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Who moves their second on it? I'll chair a second now. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any against? Adjourn.